...have been corrected by the city administrator, but he did not do so. And this makes him the quasi tort concerning this lie that is also now in addition to vicarious liberality against his employers, the city council members, that decided to keep him in office last year. It found it takes two weeks to get a no left turn sign from out of town. The city of Muscatine Street Department's various signs are stored for human or weather replacement needs. For the majority have an acceptable excuse to accept the grant for the roundabout, they need a signed situation to exceed the time period for the grant's deadline date. The Max Kaufman situation. When the mayor hit the gavel on the table, it signified that the city council meeting is now in session as she was talking to Mr. Kaufman. When the city administrator went after Mr. Kaufman, he used authority forbidden even by the U.S. government, broadened powers. Mr. Mansanger used it under politically correct term for its enforcement. The city administrator during his lamb like period did become the alleged Speaker of the Council and conservative of the peace under his shared broadened powers. When the meeting was convened, the proper way to handle the situation for the city council to appeal a decision from the chair. Mr. Sausado did more damage to the council in his homeland security speech than accepted what Mr. Mansanger did and did avoid the question of where was the sergeant at arms when Mr. Kaufman was talking with the mayor? In addition, city council employee Mansanger violated eighteen USC two four two and with prejudice sent both Mr. Kaufman and his constitutional rights out the door. The rights Mr. Kaufman is using to include redress of grievances, freedom of expression, freedom of speech, if not more, with the traditional seasonal European visual aid. Even here, the city council majority is under vicarious library over what both they and Mr. Mansanger did to both Mr. Kaufman, the U.S. Constitution, the Iowa Constitution, small s states, small r republic, their oath of office and their promise to be of the president's pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Is there anyone else here tonight that'd like to address council? Hearing none, we're going to move on with tonight's agenda. We're on number five, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items six A and B, items eight A through J, items nine A and B, items twelve A through F, and tonight's bills totaling three million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and one cent? Second? We have a motion by Councilman Sausado with a second by Councilman Brackett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries with all ayes. Now we'll move on down to number seven, public hearings. We have four public hearings tonight. The first public hearing concerns the proposed submission of an application for state and federal transit funding. The city of Muscatine Transit, which is Musca Bus, applies annually for funding through a consolidated funding application. The amounts being requested include four hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for federal funding and one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred dollars for state funding. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing nothing. Do I have a motion to close tonight's public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Spread. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries with all ayes. Our second public hearing tonight concerns the proposed development agreement with White Distribution and Supply. The development agreement would provide financial incentives to the company in the form of annual appropriation tax increment payments. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Debbie Harms, twenty-two twenty-one Oak Valley Drive. And I'm a member of the White Distribution Ownership Group and on behalf of them and our employees, I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity that we have for you to look at the proposal. We're looking forward to growing more with the city and we've enjoyed a great workforce here and are looking forward to adding more employees also, so, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments and we look forward to working with you as well. Any other comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second? We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Malcolm. Is there any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries with all ayes. Our third public hearing concerns the proposed 2019 annual plan. Under federal regulations, qualified public housing authorities, including the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency, are required to have a resident advisory board as well as conducting an annual public hearing to receive comments on proposed goals, policy changes, and the use of public funds. This public comment, public hearing, is required prior to the adoption of the annual plan. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing nothing. Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Spread. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries with all ayes. Our final public hearing concerns the disposal of city-owned surplus property. The city acquires this property, acquired this property as part of the Mad Creek Levy Project and no longer has a need for this property. It is recommended that city council approve the sale of the city-owned property to the adjacent landowner at a price to cover expenses. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing nothing. Do I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second? Allen, or Councilman Spread? We have a motion by Councilwoman Brackett with a second by Councilman Spread. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with all ayes. We're on number nine now, and we have two proclamations for the evening. The first is the April Fair Housing Month. Whereas Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, commonly known as the Fair Housing Act, was enacted into law April eleventh of nineteen sixty-eight, recognizing that no American should have the right to purchase or rent shelter of choice abridged because of their race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And whereas 2018 marks the fiftieth anniversary of this monumental Civil Rights Act of Congress. And whereas the city of Muscatine is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas equality is a fundamental policy of this nation, state, and our city. And whereas the Muscatine City Council believes that access to fair housing laws have made our community stronger and more vibrant. And whereas ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising the awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas we are committed to promoting housing choices and fostering inclusiveness, inclusive communities free from housing discrimination. Now therefore, I, Diana Broderston, Mayor of the city of Muscatine, do hereby recognize the fiftieth anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act and proclaim April of 2018 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Muscatine, Iowa. Jody, did you want this now, or you want to get it after? Our second proclamation tonight is for Richard and Mary Jo Stanley Day. Whereas we note with sorrow the passing of lifelong Muscatine residents, Richard, we know him as Dick, and Mary Jo Stanley, late last year. And whereas Dick and Mary Jo made enormous contributions to the economic, cultural, and physical well-being of Muscatine residents. And whereas through Stanley Consultants and HNI, the Stanley family made an enduring investment in the economic vitality of our community. And whereas through the Stanley Foundation, Dick and Mary Jo preserved and carried forward to succeeding generations a family vision of a more just and peaceful world, embracing the voices and dignity of all people. And whereas Dick and Mary Jo gave of their time, talent, and treasure to support worthy causes which continue to enhance the lives of Muscatine residents, including the Muscatine Health Support Foundation, the Muscatine Art Center, the Muscatine Art Center Support Foundation, the Muscatine Symphony Orchestra, the Muscatine Center for Social Action, First Presbyterian Church of Muscatine, and the Muscatine Area AIDS Coalition, the Rotary Club of Muscatine, and many, many others. And whereas outside of Muscatine, Dick and Mary Jo gave significant support to Hancher Auditorium, the University of Iowa Stanley Museum of Art, the African American Museum of Iowa, and many other worthy causes which enriched the lives of so many people across the state and around the world. And whereas the community is planning Follow the Music, a day celebrating the legacy of Dick and Mary Jo Stanley, with significant community-oriented events for May twentieth of 2018. Now therefore, I, Diana Broderston, Mayor of the city of Muscatine, on behalf of the entire city council, in recognition of Richard and Mary Jo Stanley's many contributions to our city and its residents, do hereby express our deep appreciation for their dedication and declare May twentieth of 2018, Richard and Mary Jo Stanley Day in the city of Muscatine. Keith Porter is here tonight. I'd love to present this to you, Keith.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thanks to the rest of you as well.
Would you like to share a little bit about what's going to happen that day?
Thank you. Thank you very much to the council for agreeing to this proclamation. May twentieth, 2018, we will have, that's a Sunday in the afternoon, we will have a free concert in Weed Park. The director of Hancher Auditorium has arranged for the Preservation Hall Jazz Band from New Orleans to do a free concert in Weed Park that afternoon. Many of you may remember many years ago when we had the Joffrey Ballet do a free performance at Weed Park, and it was really one of the most wonderful days in Muscatine that I can remember, when we had thousands of people out there in their lawn chairs and were hoping to recreate some of that spirit. During the day, we will have two open houses, one at MCSA and one at the Muscatine Art Center, both places very near and dear to Dick and Mary Jo. And we will, at each of those places, have displays from many, many different organizations that they supported, whether they were nonprofits or businesses. Stanley Consultants will have a display, so will the Stanley Foundation. I was just talking with John about having Sister Cities have their display there as well, and many others. The Muscatine Health Support Foundation, which has now, under Dick's leadership, was moved to the Community Foundation. They'll be making their first grants under the new leadership, and we will be doing that at MCSA on that afternoon, so I think that'll help draw a crowd. People like to get the money, so that's good. And it's certainly a way to honor the philanthropic spirit of Dick and Mary Jo here in Muscatine. And so you'll be hearing more about the things going on that day, but it should be a really nice day, and let's hope we have good weather as well. If not, we will be at the high school auditorium, so.
Thank you so much, Keith.
Great, thank you.
They're sorely missed, and we appreciate this recognition of them. We're going to move along with tonight's agenda. We are on eleven A. Presented for city council's consideration tonight is the second and final reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the March 2018 Consolidated Urban Renewal Area Edition pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Sausado?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted with all ayes. Eleven B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving a development agreement with White Distribution and Supply LLC, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenue to the payment of the agreement. This development agreement would provide financial incentives to the company in the form of annual appropriation tax increment payments. This is what we talked about in public hearing B. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Sausado. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Sausado, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the application for state and federal transit funding. The city of Muscatine Transit, Musca Bus, applies annually for funding through a consolidated funding application. The amounts being requested include four hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars for federal funding and one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred dollars for state funding. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread with a second by Councilman Sausado. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brackett?
Aye.
And Councilman Sausado?
Aye.
This resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the 2019 Public Housing Authority Annual Plan and the Public Housing Operating and Capital Fund Program Budget. This was public hearing C. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Brackett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Sausado, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
This motion is also adopted with all ayes. Eleven E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the disposal of city-owned surplus property. The city acquired this property as part of the Mad Creek Levy Project and no longer has a need for the property. It is recommended that the city council approve the sale of the city-owned property to the adjacent landowner at a price to cover the expenses. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Sausado?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Brackett?
Aye.
The motion is adopted with all ayes. We're on eleven F. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting the date for the sale of the General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, Series 2018, and authorizing the use of the preliminary official statement in connection therewith. The city council previously took action to approve the bond issue to be dated May twenty-third of 2018 to finance various city capital projects which are either underway or will be completed in the coming year. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread with a second by Councilman Brackett. Any discussion?
Just a quick note, Your Honor. The press release went out this afternoon, and the city retained its AA two rating, so that was good news.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Sausado?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on eleven G. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding the contract for Phase Four West Hill Sewer Separation Project. Five bids were received with the lowest responsible bid received from KE Flatworks in the amount of six million, one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents. The approval of contract and bond is set for April nineteenth of 2018. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Sausado. Discussion?
I have a few questions.
Before we go to your questions, Councilman Sausado, I just wanted to clarify for the folks at home that when you're reading the supporting documents for this, there's a typographical error where it actually says Phase Three, but it means Phase Four, and if you continue to read, you'll discover that. Councilman Sausado, questions?
Is Jim going to be able to answer these questions? Okay, so when we finish with what they currently have on Mississippi Drive, is the plan for them to complete the work that they have on Mississippi Drive then move right over into this phase, or are we going to be separating their crews?
Counsel, Mayor? The plan is additional crews. There's nothing contingent on Mississippi Drive, and they're not going to try to complete that and then move to it. There's an additional crew that, from that contractor that mobilizes onto Second Street on the ninth, and I think there's going to be another additional crew that mobilizes in for the sewer separation. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does, it does. So there's basically subbing out for the underground stuff and then?
Yes.
You're going to be doing the rest?
Yes.
Are we going to be utilizing the same crews as far as the undergrounds that we had before? The same subgroup?
Well, the crew that has done most of the underground work from Mississippi Drive?
Yes.
Is still going to be working on Mississippi Drive. There are additional crews that are going to come in and start working. So it's the same contractor, obviously, but it's a different crew. Different crews.
But I meant it was the same contractor.
Yeah, yes, it's the same subcontractor. The KE Flatworks is the general, but KMA, I think it's trucking, is the underground contractor.
Do you feel comfortable with the work that we've gotten up to this point?
So far, yes, yes, yes.
Good, good. All right, that's all I have.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Comments? Thank you, Jim. Hearing no other comments. Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Sausado?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The motion, or the resolution is adopted with all ayes. We're on eleven H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for the issuance of a purchase order to EB Solutions in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars for well drilling at Muscatine County Landfill. Bids were received from EB Solutions of Cedar Rapids and Team Services of Des Moines. EB Solutions was the low bid at forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Spread. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Have we used EB before?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know that Brian Steinman, the Public Works Director, actually worked with EB for a while, so he's familiar, as a student, familiar with his work and his operation. But I don't know if the city has ever used them before.
Do you know the depth that we're drilling?
Three of them are bedrock, so they're deep, and two are table, so they're not as deep. I didn't bring the drilling document with me. I can get you that information tomorrow.
No, if you're going to bedrock, then you're probably going over, close to a hundred feet.
You'll also find it in that presentation that Tim Bilo did at the previous end-up session. It's all included in there.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Kristi.
Sure.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is approved with all ayes. Also presented for city council's consideration is a request for the issuance of a purchase order to Barker Lamar for one day of oversight of drilling at Muscatine County Landfill in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Brackett with a second by Councilman Brackett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're on eleven I. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a change order for the Musser Public Library and HNI Community Center project. There are three items included on the change order. Additional carpeting on Level One, light well shaft infill, and reinforcement of existing glass handrails with metal caps. These changes were necessary because the carpet was in unforeseen site condition. Infilling the light well shaft abated a safety risk, and capping the glass handrails was a code requirement. The total additional cost is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Malcolm with a second by Councilman Spread. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Eleven J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for the issuance of a purchase order to Envisionware in the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for the purchase of document stations for the library. The library document stations are the final component of a suite of technology products intended to increase patron convenience and provide for more efficient use of library staff and resources. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Sausado. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is approved with all ayes. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for the issuance of a purchase order to Marco in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for the purchase of outdoor theater equipment for the library. This equipment will be used for various events throughout the year and will take advantage of the extra space that is now available. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Sausado with a second by Councilman Spread. Is there any discussion?
I look forward to seeing events there.
I think it'll be nice. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is approved with all ayes. Eleven L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for the issuance of a purchase order to Gov Connections in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for the purchase of eight Microsoft Surface Pro tablets and warranties to be used for patrons at the library. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted? Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Any discussion?
Did we budget these?
Yes.
These are? Okay. That's all I have.
How do we keep these from walking off?
Um, they will be checked out and they will
Pam, could you come up? I'm sorry. Folks at home can't hear us. The question is, how do we keep them from
Leaving the building, maybe that should be a better way of
Patrons will have to have a library card to check them out. We will offer library cards for people who are unable to get a regular card to check out materials, but they will be still able to, um, check out the laptops. Say, for instance, they don't live in our service area, or they have too many overdoses or something. Um, the computers will have security on them. I can't say it's going to be, you know, it's going to definitely prison it, but we will also, um, have their IDs and we'll have their information. We've had, um, laptops and, um, mostly right now we're checking out, um, oh, I forget. I don't, we're checking out tablets, um, and we've had them be stolen. But, um, we, we have the GPS on them, and then the police go and, and pick them up and, um, press charges. So
Okay.
we don't tend to have too much problems.
Okay, thank you.
We don't really expect a lot more.
Thank you, Pam. Hearing no other comments, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all eyes. Eleven M. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to purchase a replacement Tahoe for the one totaled in January of two thousand and eighteen. Bid requests were sent out to vendors and two were received. One from Krieger's for thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty cents, and one from Carl Chevrolet in Ankeny for thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty cents. The Krieger's bid is within the two percent local match. It is requested that City Council approve the purchase of a Tahoe from Krieger's Motor Company. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Any discussion?
Um, I just have a question. Is this, um, the resource of the purchase of this vehicle, is that from the insurance claim or?
It's my understanding that we were paid from insurance for it, but now we're having to do the request to purchase the new one. But it was covered under insurance. Is that accurate, Brett?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not sure why the police chief needs a car. He can walk the beep, okay.
Hearing no other comments, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all eyes. We're on eleven N. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve the design and engineering for the Hauser Street and Fulium Street Roundabout. On March twenty-first and March twenty-second, Public Works Director Brian Steinman met with the residents affected by the proposed roundabout and received positive feedback. It is staff's recommendation that council authorize a contract with Shive Hattery in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars to proceed with the design of the project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Spread. Is there any discussion?
I've got a couple of questions on this, if you could. Basically, what, I'd like a little bit of more description of the meeting that took place and what the, what the feedback was on that. I know that we had some questions previously about some of the driveways and whatnot. Maybe you could just fill us in a bit.
Mayor, Counsel, I would have been disappointed in you if you hadn't asked that question. I really would have. First of all, I'm the perfect person to do that, because I don't know how we got to that, and I'm not trying to steal Brian's thunder, because he's not here, but actually I was the one that met with the homeowners out there.
Right.
And went through it. The two property owners that are on the west side are the two that are most grievously affected by this with those, um, driveways coming out onto Hauser. Everybody still with me?
Right, those are the ones that will end up with the, uh, right-in, right-out situation.
Right, okay, okay. The one that's on the north side of Fulium has plans, he told me, to build a garage on the side of his house facing out towards Fulium, and he is all in on us taking his existing driveway out and putting a driveway out onto Fulium, which is a huge win for everybody, because that takes away the safety concern. It takes away the restrictions of a right-in, right-out only onto, uh, um, Hauser.
Right, perfect.
The delay, uh, that we did have was with the house that's, uh, south of Fulium there, uh, on that side. There are new owners there. The closing was the twenty-third of last month, if I remember right. So we had to wait for them to close and to move in. We've chatted with them, and we met together as a group so that, um, everybody knows what is going to happen with everybody else there.
Okay.
So that somebody doesn't say, wait a second, I didn't know so-and-so was going to get a new driveway out of the deal. I want a new driveway. We talked quite a bit with them about just putting a T or a hammerhead turnaround in the driveway so that they could pull in and out. Mutually with those two young individuals and myself. I had a quick little conversation there, and then we had a conversation later over at Public Works. There's not a great deal of work that would be necessary to, um, reverse that garage and have the garage door come out the west side of the garage and either leave the garage door there that's there or finish that off. And so what was discussed there was again bringing that, uh, a new driveway in off of Fulium there, getting rid of the one that's on Hauser and flip-flopping in that one-car garage. Um, the way we would do that is we'd get an estimate. We'd have them get an estimate if they wanted to. We'd come to an agreement as to what the dollar amount is, but we would take that amount of money and give it to them so that they can do that work. We don't want to be in the business of doing that and then having a wa- a warranty or having them come back and say, wait a second, this isn't working correct. Right, we want them to have the responsibility of that and working with the contractor to fix that.
Does that apply to the concrete as well, or would we pour the concrete for the driveway and on the one across the street as well?
No, we would do that, that work for the concrete, because that's kind of necessary to do, to do, get the staging and everything else. We see that as part of the project. It's just we don't want to be doing anything with anybody's house.
Right, right, okay.
That's not our business. So that took care of the two biggest concerns. You go across the street from that now. I'm in the southeast corner. That's the house that's for sale. That gentleman came and, and met and, yeah. What's the right term? Uh, lukewarm at best is his reaction to, to this. He did say in that meeting, I, I see that there's a benefit, but right after that comes a statement that I think the unknown of this project is going to make it harder for me to sell my house. I really don't have any response to that, and there's not really much that the city, I think, can do about that. But his one request was that, that, uh, to expedite it as, as fast as possible. He wants the unknowns over and done with, so this is what you're going to get.
Sure.
The two, I think they're sisters, the two ladies live on the northeast corner. You know, their driveway is far enough away, there's not a real, um, concern of theirs. Again, they reiterated, they'd love to see it done before school goes back in session.
Right.
I am not sure we can accomplish that. We may have to wait till the next summer to do it, because that's going to be an awfully accelerated project to try to get it this summer. I think, I think we will try, but there are some other things involved in that. And so the, the biggest, scariest thing that came out of that was that all of them wanted it done as quick as possible. So that's the summary of those conversations.
And then just because, and I already know the answer to this, but I have to ask anyway. Did, did we change anything with signage in that area in the meantime to see if we could improve traffic flow?
Did we change?
Did we, did we add any stop signs or any?
No.
Any other, okay.
No, we have not.
Okay.
Jim, if we were to, uh, get this approved for a design, and you were going to look at an implementation, you would be looking at, you said, next summer, potentially?
We want to get authorization from you guys to enter into this contract. We will get into this, if, if that is your desire, we will jump into this contract. We will get with these guys, and we will say, look, we want to get this thing designed, we want to get it out on the street just as fast as possible. How quick can we do that? I don't know. My hope is, is that we can get it done this summer. Again, that's just more construction added upon, more construction. I think it makes everybody a little testy, but if we, if it's possible to do it, we can do it. But it'd be, I can't stand up here in front of you and tell you that's the case when we aren't even under contract yet, and we haven't even had that real conversation with, uh, designers for it.
Well, even if, even if it was done during school or ended up in school, you have Logan Street that they can go.
Yes.
You have, you have the, the other access out of that west Fulium area around, by where the, the, uh, high-rise building was. You can go south and around.
Right.
So really, it would, it would be an inconvenience, but it's very, very, very doable.
Yes, yeah, I, I, I agree completely with that. I, I think my job here tonight was to convey to you what I learned from those people, and they, they want it done before school goes back in session.
Right, and I, I guess my, yeah, my final thoughts on it are, I, I really, even though maybe not everyone agrees with me on this, I, I, I would definitely like to see it done while school is not in session. And I think that it would cause a, you know, having lived in that area and for quite some time and dealt with that intersection substantially personally, I, I think it would be a significant impact if it was, if it was closed during, uh, school. You know, during those, during those times of day. I mean, and I will say, I, I also, I don't know, I don't think that this is going to fix all the problems there, but I'm willing to give it a try based on the opinions of those residents in that area. I'm glad that you met with them. And, uh, you know, I, I've got mixed feelings, but I'm, uh, more comfortable with it than I was previously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Jim, do you know at this time, depending on the design, were Muscatine Power and Water be involved for moving high lines, et cetera?
Um, yes. Uh, Muscatine Power and Water will be involved. I just had a conversation this morning, yes, this morning with, uh, Jeff Hedrington, who's their manager of operations. And it was the same conversation that I just had with you guys. You know, if this goes the way we hope it goes tonight, we'll be under contract, and then we want to start talking with you guys about the one pole out there that needs to be moved. It doesn't need to be moved out of line. It just, I mean, needs to be moved along the line. And it's all something that is doable. But again, we need to bring, we need to get them into the fold and say, here's what needs to be done. They need to look at, see how much it costs to do it. We need to figure out how those costs get paid for. Whether they're shared, whether they're, whatever that ends up being, so.
You're saying that at least they've moved one pole.
It, right now, the whole, the concept is that there's one that needs to be moved, yes.
That doesn't, at this time, seem like a big deal, but we hope it
Hank, doesn't seem to me like it's a big deal, yeah. But it could become that, yes.
Anything else? Thank you, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The request is approved with all eyes. We're on fourteen, communications. Councilman Harvey, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Spread?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Malcolm?
Yes, Your Honor. You know, I, um, this week had a conversation with counsel in regard of the suit, counter-suit. I think I would like to see, uh, counsel retain, um, to represent the new people, even though we're not technically in part of it, but we're part of it in cheer, not in person. So if we have questions and concerns, we can be comfortable asking those questions and concerns as outsiders, because we're getting the information and some of them
Your Honor, I, I, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, well, I do mean to interrupt you, but if I could, if I could interrupt you for a moment, i- if, if counsel would like to discuss that, I really think it'd be more appropriate in a, in a closed session, um, setting.
We're discussing legal strategy.
Regarding your
Okay, okay.
Regarding legal strategy and, and with your, I don't know who the appropriate person to have in that room with you is, and, and I assume that not everybody would be able to attend that meeting, so I, but I would recommend that you, you, you talk to your, uh, current counsel and, and come up with a, a plan to do that in closed session and have that discussion in closed session.
We can work on that. Anything else, Councilman Malcolm?
Not tonight, so far, Your Honor.
Councilman Saseo?
Just, uh, with keeping Muscatine beautiful, we're going to be having the springwide cleanup as far as, uh, the citywide cleanup. So make sure that you're paying attention to the Facebook status, our muscatineiowa.gov website that will be giving you the updates in regards to our citywide cleanup, and, uh, it will be coming up here, I think, in our third week of April. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brockert?
I did my part for picking up trash on Monday, and my arms are still sore. Um, I'd like to, uh, ask Dave what's going on in the field of community development. Do we have anything to talk about?
Jim's been here. Thank you for your question, and Mayor and Counsel, I'm glad you asked. We have approximately like a quarter of a billion dollars of active projects going on in this city. And that's after the last four years or so, we've seen a billion dollars invested in this community completed. You know, everything from Community Bank and Trust all the way up through. I mean, it's been a phenomenal community. It's what's, one of the elements and recipes that's kept our tax rate flat is because of the increase in the amount of activity here. Not sure if that's going to continue at that pace, but it has taxed our department quite a bit of, of manpower or staff, time, and such. And we're holding up well, but I'm trying to think of some new stuff. One of the biggest issues is focusing on the southern side of the, of the city. In my opinion, it's been somewhat differently approached than other parts of the community. And that's why we submitted, uh, our grant applicant, not a grant application, a more of a de- designation for this opportunity zone a few weeks ago. That opportunity zone, um, and I know, uh, Counsel Brackett, that you had forwarded something like a link or two on that way back. That, um, we took advantage of, of submitting that, and the biggest, uh, score was the south end of the, the city, and it's all done by census tracts. There's that one, there's Park Avenue, there's downtown, there's another one that's just beyond the downtown. But the, that was the highest, that was the
We're good.
Someone check on Chad. But, um, primarily is what can we do to help, uh, foster investments into that side of the city? And that's a real positive. There's other things that we're trying to push. There is something that we're trying to, I've been trying to pursue primarily, is trying to get a grocery store in that south end to support the, the population there. There's, it's, even the one that was there wasn't all that great, I'll admit.
That's true.
Okay. And, uh, we had a place back home in New Hampshire called Sclafani's. I, I was just explaining it to my daughter today, and, and she says, yeah, it was a, it was the Sclafani's of, of food discounts, and that wasn't that great, but what we, what we have some potential prospects are all positive, all good. Better than you saw before. So in essence, um, the Dollar General is packed. I don't know if anybody's driven by that new one. And I'm wondering if it's just because it's crisp and it's new and things like that. But the focus now is going to be on the south end. You're going to see the big, uh, Grand, the Grandview, uh, reconstruction, trying to perk up the buildings and houses that are alongside of that. We're going to tie, we already have the, uh, the trail system that went in. There's some roughage, I'll call it, uh, on some of the tracks of land that are between the street and the tracks. So there's a, there's a lot, uh, a lot of activity. And on my board, I've had a, I've had a laundry list of, some of you have seen them, of different programs, projects, and such that will all enhance the city. And, and one day, we'll do a, I'll do an in-depth on that for the council and the citizens. And, um, I hope that it will yield some good results. I'm trying to think, do you have any other questions regarding that?
Well, there hasn't, I was just going to ask, can you give us a brief update on the the multi-modal port project?
Right now, since, since right now, that's a public-private venture where the public side is primarily entrance and building up the roads to access the port, whereas the port itself as it's being built will be built with private funds. So they're not going to require governmental funding. We're waiting for them to make the final decision on that economic valuation. And we did have, and some of the councils did attend from their entities, their, their commercial entities did attend and got a chance to see how much interest there was. We held a, a large conference, was it probably two months ago?
It was before Christmas.
It was before Christmas? I guess that's more than two months. The, the point is that we're waiting for the private side to make a decision to go forth with the port before we go forward with trying to apply for funding and assistance on some of the infrastructure.
Your knowledge is no governmental problems at the moment? Meaning not with Muscatine, but with permitting, et cetera?
No, we pretty much have a handle on each one of the permits that will be required as well as coordination with some of the federal agencies such as customs and borders and things like that, you know?
Nobody said no way yet.
No. I'll, I'll say it this way, no one said no and no one sure as, as Dickens has says, no hell no. You know, this is all really, yeah, this sounds like a good plan, a good idea still.
So the port itself would be a private venture and our only role would be to make the roads up to it?
Well, primarily the access to, to it right now. That's sort of the game plan. So, I mean, that's the big ticket item, building port. I'm not saying that it's not less than, but they can't, if we can't get the trucks and, and vehicles and freight in and out of there, then it makes it a kind of lopsided...
And is that already city property or does it need to be annexed in?
The property needs to be annexed in and it will be, it's owned privately, but the commitment is to annex it into the city.
Otherwise, the county would have to work on the roads, not us.
Well, the roads themselves are mixed between the city-owned, there's parts of it that's city and parts of it that's county. We will definitely have to cooperate with the county on whatever section of it's theirs. Yeah, it's not going to be on, without that cooperation.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Did you have anything else, Councilwoman Brockert?
No.
Okay. Councilman Brackett?
I just wanted to reiterate that we will absolutely have a soapbox derby this year.
Yay.
So that registration will be opening soon through the Facebook page, the website, and we'll be trying to get some flyers out at some point as well. And we, so looking forward to having people sign up, looking forward to anybody that wants to sponsor and looking forward to vendors that might want to get involved in some way, shape or form. And they can reach out to, through the, through the Facebook page would probably be best or Muscatine, they can reach out to me too. I can put them in contact with whoever they need to talk to.
I've been hearing chatter in the community about it.
Cool.
Are you going to drive this year?
No, I had to back out of some, I, I've got too many things going on and I was directed to maybe back out of a, something if I was going to take something else on. So I am, I am helping organize the event and working on things within that and will be working on it that day, but I'm not going to drive this year. I, last year was, it was a lot of fun. But yeah, it's kind of scary going down Third Street at 30-plus miles an hour in a little wood box. So I'll do it again if I get a chance, though.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Staff?
Nothing tonight, other than just a reminder of the closed session.
And I just had a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank Senator Ernst who was in Muscatine this morning. We had a great meeting. And April 25th, at the Muscatine High School, we're having a youth job fair. This is a great opportunity for young people to get a summer job. So we're going to have employers there that are looking for people to work for them for the summer. Parents can bring their youth and get them signed up and give them something positive to do and learn some job skills this summer. Next, I'd like to remind everyone, we talked in our last council meeting about our city show that we're going to start doing, bringing out some of the great things that are happening in some of our departments here in the city. And that, our first episode is going to be on April 17th at 6:30 at night, so you'll be seeing some more about that. But we're going to be talking about our spring cleanup week and sharing all the information that everybody in the community needs to know about that. Our next coffee with the mayor is April 28th at 9:00 AM at Happy Joe's. And I'd like to share that tomorrow is Blueout Day. We chose Blueout Day as a way to remind people that child abuse prevention is everybody's job and everybody in our community, we're asking to wear blue tomorrow in honor of child abuse prevention. At your areas of work, if you could snap a photo of all of you in blue, there is a Facebook page, hashtag Great Childhoods Muscatine. And load your picture up there. We'd love to see them. So you'll see people around the community tomorrow wearing blue and now you'll know what that's for and we hope you join us in doing that. Now, we would like to take a brief recess while we move into closed session. Thank you all for coming and have a good rest of your evening.